Okay, thank you Maria. I'd like to call to order the Planning Commission meeting for March 24th. Roll call please.
Chair Gross.
Here.
Vice Chair DeBolt.
Here.
Commissioner Andre.
Here.
Commissioner Wilty, excuse. Commissioner Lo.
Here.
Commissioner Riley.
Here.
And Commissioner Sokolcanik.
Here.
Thank you. Would you all please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic.
Public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If anybody has any oral communications that they would like to present on something that is not on the agenda, if we have anything that was sent in, do you know if we do Maria?
Yes, so altogether for item 7A, we received 11 public comments prior to the 4:00 PM cutoff time. And then we also received three more after the 4:00 cutoff time. These will be included to the official record for the meeting.
Okay.
And then as well for item 7C, we received 4:00 PM cutoff time and zero after the 4:00 PM cutoff time.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
One moment. Okay, we don't have any minutes to approve, consent counted or none, so if we could go to public hearing for 7A, can we get a staff report, please?
Evening Chair Gross and members of the board. I'm going to kick it off, do a little intro before we head over and hand it over to our associate planner, Tom Oliver. But real quick, I'm not, you know, I know we all have read, but this one 7A is about a conditional use permit for a health fitness, a dance zone in a large PLI zone. So basically what I want to remind the commission here, because I've been getting some questions is you guys, we have the applicants tonight on the line with all the items 7A, I believe 7B and 7C. So please ask your questions and you have every, you know, so ask their question again, the applicants are here to answer any, address any questions or address any concerns. I just wanted to state that before we kick it over to Tom Oliver.
Thank you.
Chair Gross and members of the Planning Commission, conditional use permit 2005 is a consideration of a health and fitness facility large in the Planlight Industrial Zone at 10821 Bloomfield Street, Unit B. The applicants are here with us, I see on the pictures there, the Gomez family, that's Glenn and Elizabeth. The applicant has submitted an application asking for the city to approve a dance studio, onstage dance center. Do you hear someone who's talking like I do?
I get an echo.
Yeah.
I'm fine.
All right, so they would like to move into a unit in the industrial area of the city. The unit is approximately 22,040 square feet and is in the industrial park located on the west side of Bloomfield Street, halfway between Catella and Cerritos, yeah, and Cerritos. And staff has identified this business to be considered the health fitness facilities large since 7,000 square feet of the unit will be used for the dance studio and the rest will be used as warehouse for the dance studio. Onstage Dance Center has been in the Los Alamitos area since 2008. They were in the, they are in the town center shopping center at Catella and Los Al Boulevard. The proposed hours of operation would be 4:00 to 9:00 PM Monday through Friday, 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM on Saturday and closed on Sunday. There would be a total of five employees with one teacher per classroom and one front desk member. Class size would be limited to 10 students for groups and other rooms will be private 101 instruction. The proposed dance studio would require 51 spaces. Mr. Sees is in the same building and that would also require, I mean parking spaces, I'm sorry. Mr. Sees is in the same building and requires 18 parking spaces and that's in the parking lot. They do have a tow yard behind the building where they impound vehicles. And it's separated from the front of the building by the building. Staff has had concerns about the location proposed and whether it is a safe place for a dance studio that caters to children. And after discussion among staff, how the applicant could possibly ensure safety in the same building with Mr. Sees towing, staff added protective measures to the conditions of approval such as video surveillance cameras, abbreviated hours of operation just slightly to 8:30, and enhanced parking lot lighting. Onstage Dance Center has become an important part of our community and staff would like to see this business continue operating somewhere in the city. And commissioners have received letters of support that are attached to the, I mean, letters of support that are attached to the staff report, wow. And after viewing the proposal for consistency with the general plan and municipal code, as well as potential impacts, such compatibility and such compatibility with surrounding uses, staff believes that affirmative findings can be made for the proposed CUP and add, and as long as it has the added security conditions and therefore staff recommends approval. And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Before I open this up, I wanted to see if any of the commissioners have any questions of the staff?
I have one.
Gary?
Does this property fall in the area that we had designated for, or we were trying to consolidate at one time, uses such as this, does this fall in that area or just fall outside that area?
Outside that area.
Okay. I think that's it.
Does any of the other commissioners have any questions of staff?
I think Art does, but his phone is muted.
You're muted Art.
It's unmute Art.
You're not unmuted yet.
Yeah. How did it mute? I had unmuted it before, okay. Yeah, quick question regarding the safety concerns of the staff. If the, if the safety concerns are emanating from Mr. Sees, I guess the question I have is, why are we burdening the applicant with issues that emanate from Mr. C? Like questions, the question I have is lighting, is there adequate lighting over there already? And shouldn't that be under the requirement of the owner of the building to provide adequate lighting for the, at least for the parking areas, you know? Does he meet the current requirements from the city?
Yes, he does, but at this point it's not bright enough for recommended security. However, the, since this is, the applicant is the dance studio asking for approval tonight, we can't condition Mr. Sees over the property owner as part of this. So it really is, the condition is on the applicant.
All right, okay. All right.
Does any of the, are you, have any other questions?
Yeah, one last, just a follow on to that. But if the lighting is not adequate for security on that site, regardless of who's in that, in that, in that location.
Yeah.
Don't we have minimum standards for lighting?
Yes, we do. This is higher than that.
Right, so Art.
All right, okay, so they're meeting a minimum.
Yeah, let me clarify, right? So like Tom said, that there is lighting in there and is sufficient. But what we're worried about is because there's a constant flow of traffic going in and out. We want to increase the lighting for vehicle visibility in case a child walks out.
I got it. All right, all right, great, I got it.
Do you have any other questions, Commissioner DeBolt?
No.
Do I have any questions from any of the other commissioners of staff?
I have a question. It's kind of a follow on to Gary's question. So there is an area that we've designated for recreational type of uses. Is that area impacted? Is there no availability in that space or?
Correct, right now there is no availability in that space. That is no longer designated as the only place that health and fitness facilities can go anymore. The entire Planlight Industrial Zone is now a place where these kinds of businesses can go. That was removed as part of the zoning update.
Okay, thank you.
Do I have any other questions from the commissioners for staff? Okay, seeing that I have no more questions of the staff, I will open this up for public comment. But before I open it up for public comment, what I'd like to kind of mention is that we have a lot of people that may be tied into this question online, I'm not 100% sure. But if we do, we're only going to be able to have one person speaking at a time. It's very difficult for us to control the meeting by Zoom when you have multiple people talking. So I am going to ask Maria that if she needs to, to mute somebody so that we can hear the person speaking at that time and not have multiple conversations. So I am going to open up the meeting to, and ask the applicant first to speak and please give us a report and give us some updates.
Hi there. So good evening, City Planning Commissioners and the City of Los Alamitos Community members. My name is Elizabeth Gomez and I've been a proud business owner in the City of Los Alamitos since 2008. I am grateful to the city for allowing my staff and I at On Stage to impact the lives of thousands of children in the last 14 years. My current dance studio is located in the old Hofshut Shopping Center off of Los Alamitos Boulevard in Catella, where we offer instruction in tap, jazz, ballet, lyrical dance to the youth from ages three years old to 18. We have the privilege of teaching, coaching and mentoring the youth of the community while being highly involved in the community events such as school carnivals, street fairs, and all city school functions that support the physical and social emotional health and development of our children. Sorry. In addition, our studio is a longstanding theater program for the Los Alamitos High School song, cheer and dance program. I'm here tonight seeking approval from the City Commission to move my business into a larger facility within the community where On Stage Dance Center will be able to train and mentor more students and provide a safer environment for children to attend class at my studio. The proposed location is not only more central located for my students, but also it has ample parking and is more secure for drop off and pickup zones for the students. In such an uncertain time to our children, I hope that the Planning Commission can permit On Stage Dance Center to move to a larger facility where we can increase our impact on the community's children. Dance is an amazing activity for developing competence as well as communication skills. Dance is beneficial in increasing self-esteem and boosting confidence by fostering self-expression and developing social skills. There's nothing that would make my staff, my students, their families happier than to be able to grow in the community and continue to serve the families of Los Alamitos and the surrounding cities. This would be a dream come true. Thank you so much for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Before I open it up to the general public, does any of the commissioners have a question for the applicant?
I'll ask one. This is Gary. So I just, for the applicant, are you, do you have any concerns with this industrial uses around you? And obviously the, all the tow trucks and all the cars and, I mean, is that a concern of you? Because this is, I just wanted to remind you, this is a light industrial zone and those uses are surrounding you and is, if that's going to have any impact on your business, are you okay with that?
As far as I know, when I spoke with the owner of the building, they were just lending that area because of during COVID time, there was, the building is empty, so they would let them use that, the parking spaces as for now, but there's, that Mr. Sees is on the other side of the studio. It's not even next to us. This just happened to use the parking spaces during this year. The other thing is we are right across the street from an elementary school, you know, that's also has all children who are walking across the street and there's, you know, they're walking across streets in the same area. But I do know that, do you want to chime in on the?
Oh yeah, hi. So the owner, hello staff, my name is Glenn. And the owner Greg Lorenzetti, he actually submitted a letter alleviating those concerns. He basically had stated that Mr. Sees will run strictly out of the back of the building, which is on the deft touch side. So there won't be no tow trucks, there will be no towed cars, everything will be run off the backside of the building. And also the, we operate kind of in an after-school program, so we have limited impact on the surrounding businesses when they're closing. That is kind of when we're opening our doors. So that's a positive thing too. I just spoke with them, I guess he just upgraded the lighting like just a few weeks ago. So if we need to upgrade lighting further, we definitely will. And then along with the cameras and the limited hours, which I think is only like a half hour sooner than where we close now currently.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, I noticed that there's a lot of trucks in there today, you know what I mean? There's a lot in the front there, but I, because I understand they're moving to the back. Okay, great. And what about that half hour early? Is that going to affect you at all? I mean, do you really want that, that half hour early? I mean, would you rather not have that half hour early?
Right now we're operating early because of school getting out early, so we're starting early and ending earlier and it won't affect us.
Okay. So remind, refresh me on the time that you're, Tom, what was the time that we're considering?
8:30.
8:30. And why not 9 o'clock? Why, what's the problem with 9 o'clock? It's just a?
It's, well, Ron probably has an opinion on that, but it's just a little bit earlier. You know, it's sunset in at least the summertime for most of the year is a little later and, you know, sometimes lasts till then, so.
Okay.
Yeah. I want to add Commissioner Lo that our safety measures, we passed it through the police department here and so we had our captain look at that. And so she, Captain O'Connell, agreed with the commission and, you know, gave us a couple of recommendations. So we passed it through the police department, all our safety measures that we put into conditions.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Anybody, the other council member commissioners have any questions for the applicant? Okay, I will open this up to the general public. Please, only one at a time. I'm not sure exactly how we can do this Maria, but if somebody has and they unmute and somehow you acknowledge them.
So we do have five speakers for tonight. I will start with Joe Shade. I will ask for you to unmute right now. Joe, do you hear us?
Yes, thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to speak. This is Joe Shade, I'm speaking for On Stage Dance Center. I'm a longtime mom there. I sent a letter and I hope you'll have the opportunity to be able to see that. But I do just want to add a couple of things as far as our concerns for moving. First of all, we want to, this studio needs to get, it's so overgrown. We are beyond, you know, our growth at On Stage currently at our location. The new location that we'd like to get into would, without having to move out of the city of Los Alamitos, which would be detrimental on all of us as parents getting around. It's crazy that we can't just somehow overcome the obstacles that we are trying to as far as getting into the new location. Minor issues like lighting that can be fixed in a heartbeat that shouldn't really impact a whole entire, you know, studio. There's so many families that would be impacted on this and we really do need to get into our new location as soon as possible. I also like to just mention that the studio itself, as far as the staff and the parents, the way that we work together to ensure our dancer's safety is utmost important to us. You can go by our studio at any point right now and there's a constant flow of parent oversight as well as the staff. So it's something that I believe that us as parents don't really concern ourselves with because we have such a strong oversight all the time. So any issues with safety and security are overcome with the family that we have at On Stage. Just want to mention that. That is it.
Thank you very much. I did forget to mention we will keep comments to five minutes to just for timeframe.
Thank you.
Next one Maria.
Andrea Reed, I will ask you to unmute right now.
Good evening. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak tonight, Chair Gross, Vice Chair DeBolt and Plan Commissioners. It really is a privilege and I really want to start by thanking the Planning Commission. I've had the privilege to live in the community for the past 20 years. I'm the current Deputy Superintendent for the Los Alamitos Unified School District and I really know the positive things that come when our city works together. And so I really want to take an opportunity tonight just to recognize really On Stage Dance Center, that's been a pillar business in our community, a family-owned business that's been highly financially supportive of our schools through donations, performances at our schools. I also serve on the Board of We Care. They come every year donating to help benefit those who work and live in our community. And I think more than ever when our children are searching for some sense of normalcy and routine, On Stage really has been a beacon of hope for hundreds of kids. I can speak for my daughter alone. She's been dancing there since her early elementary years and she's a freshman at our high school. And it's a second home for her and her friends. The family and staff there for their heart and soul into being that one trusted adult for every kid. I think that it would be just disheartening to see such an amazing business leave our community if we can't find a space where this business could flourish and our children could continue to benefit not only from the physical effects of dance, but also from the camaraderie that it not only brings to students, but also the parents. I think living in this community, many of us moved here not only for the schools, but for the sense of community and neighborhood feel that the City of Los Alamitos gives. And On Stage really adds to that. When I think back on my children's childhood, our friends now that we travel with, they're from On Stage Dance Center. When we travel with the studio to national competitions, you know, we represent the City of Los Alamitos and I think that we do the city proud. And so I hope that the Planning Commission can see what an easy choice this really is to allow such an amazing business to really remain with the community and serve the needs of our students and our families. So thanks so much for allowing me to speak this evening.
Thank you.
We have Jeff Hearn next. I will ask you to mute right now.
There we go. Okay, thank you. Sorry about that. Yeah, hi, my name is Jeff Heron and I have the pleasure to live, work and recreate in the Los Alamitos community. And I would like to talk tonight about a father's perspective and what On Stage Dance Center has meant to me and my family, and my daughter especially. Definitely not something that I grew up with. The dance world was something that I desperately tried to avoid. And when my daughter expressed an interest in dancing, I said, well, all right, a class, maybe two. And before long, we were there every night, hours at a time because my daughter truly found the happy place that we all look for. She found the community that she wanted. There's dancers of all levels, you know, little ones who are just starting out to college-bound seniors who are working on their college-level dances. And she has been welcomed from the very beginning with open arms. From Ms. Liz on down, every teacher has put in her an understanding of how passion combined with hard work can lead to great levels of success, as well as recognizing that achieving anything truly requires the ability to work with others. These are two lessons that I know every child should learn to be a better person, to be a better member of the community. And I really feel like On Stage emphasizes this on a daily basis. My daughter has found the place where she is being pushed to be better every day, yet is also loved simply for showing up. And I think it's become her safe space and as Mrs. Reed talked about, it's her place where she has her social circle, her friends are there, her community is there. And I know that it's the same for many, many other young ladies in this community, young men in this community. It's, we are fortunate to have access to a program like this and I would hate to see it be forced to relocate because like the previous speaker said, there's so many people there, the space is bursting at the seams. I went tonight to pick up my daughter and it was a challenge to get to her. There's so many people dropping off and picking up and I just feel that a better venue would help to better maximize what this program has to offer for the community. And with that, I would just like to say thank you and have a good evening.
Thank you.
And our next speaker is Jennifer Stewart. Let me go ahead and ask you to unmute.
Hello there, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Hello, members of the Planning Commission, thank you so much for letting me speak tonight on behalf of On Stage Dance Center. Like my previous friends and speakers have said before, I'd just like to kind of give my perspective on On Stage and what an ideal business and home it's been for our daughter. It, like they said, it provides a safe place for kids to go after school and on the weekends. It fosters a feeling of community in Los Al, as well as help training dancers from the national champion Los Alamitos High School song team. That's really their main training facility outside of school hours. They have helped really spread the name of Los Al on the national stage, this little community of ours. You show up at Florida for nationals and everybody knows who Los Al is. And a majority of those girls grew up dancing at On Stage, they were trained at On Stage or they come into it as high school dancers when they realize what a great place that their teammates have been training at. So it's been, it's really put Los Al on the map in ways that common citizens may not realize. But it does train these elite athletes at the same time that it's providing a safe haven for three and four-year-olds who are putting on tap shoes for the first time. The wide array of talent that it finds a place no matter if you're a brand-new three-year-old and your very first class or you're a college-bound senior. It has fostered talent and comfort and a sense of belonging in countless children in the Los Alamitos area. I think allowing them to move to their new location, like Liz stated, it is ideally located between schools. It would give working parents easier access for their kids to have a place to go after school. I think the location is really ideal, the space allowing kids to grow. It's just vital. I think it's just absolutely so important that we realize what a strong business but community presence Los Al creates in our sweet little hometown that we all love so much. I had gone from having my four-year-old there when they first opened their doors and, you know, her little pink tutu waiting, she couldn't wait to, you know, get up on Saturday morning. To now she is a college-bound senior and she is currently auditioning for collegiate dance teams. And that is, you know, all started at On Stage. So I just want to say that I really hope that the commission puts into account how vital this business is for our wonderful community. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you.
All right, and our last speaker is Tina Hearn. I'll ask you to unmute.
Okay, I think I'm unmuted. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, usually not a problem for people to hear me. So I'm going to go ahead and thank you for letting me be here and I'm going to read something just because it's a little bit easier for me. My name is Tina Heron and I live in Rossmore. I have a 15-year-old at Los Alamitos High School and a 17-year-old. And I've taught, or my husband has taught at Los Al for the last 18 years and I've been a counselor there for the last 20 years. And I bring up our occupations because we have worked with thousands of youth over the years and know how important it is for them to find something they love. something they can commit to, and something to be involved in. But why am I all of a sudden emotional? I'm sorry. That's how much I love this place outside of the school day. My daughter, who is now 15, joined On Stage about seven years ago after trying many sports and activities. And to say this program has enriched her life is an absolute understatement. The teachers are not just dance teachers, they are mentors. Adults our youth look up to, and they want to emulate. They parent, they guide, and they teach life lessons that other people cannot teach our children, on top of dance skills. They, there are kids at this studio of every dance level, and every student finds their niche and fits in. It is one of the few athletic activities in our areas where both boys and girls are on the same team together, and nobody is ever cut from a team. Every level and every commitment level has a place. Whether you want to commit and be there for 15 hours a week, or take one 30-minute class a week, there is a place for you, and they open their doors for you. There is nothing more important for a child, and even more so a teenager, than finding a place that they fit in. Unfortunately, there is not always a place in a competitive sports environment. My oldest daughter plays water polo, and I completely understand the competitiveness of sports. On Stage Dance Center is able to open their doors to every kid and helps them grow and gain confidence for years to come. Because of this program, our daughter has continued to love dance on the competitive song team at LaSalle High School and hopes to dance in college. I call this her second family. She calls On Stage her first family. As a high school counselor, I know firsthand the need for after-school activities, especially structured ones, to keep our kids motivated, mentally healthy, and busy. We know that youth with too much free time often fill it with peer-pressured activities that we as parents try so hard to steer them away from. It's inevitable. The Dance Center keeps kids in our community involved. Dance is an activity that kids can do their entire life. It is an emotional outlet for kids. Right now, our kids need an emotional outlet. I cannot find enough positive adjectives to speak about the owner, Liz Gomez, and her staff. Very rarely do teens find a program that they can grow with. Often, they go from one team to the next, one coach to the next. That's how sports work. On Stage is a rarity where these kids grow up together and in this home away from home. The teachers work with them, sometimes from the age of four years old through high school. They go to their weddings, they attend their baby showers. They truly are their second parents. They're the person that our kids call when they have relationship issues, friend issues, and just things that they cannot talk to their own parents about. The teachers are another adult voice that they listen to. The On Stage Dance Center is truly a gem in this community. And we not only are proud to call them our own, I would literally drive to South Orange County to bring my daughter there. On Stage wants to offer more, but they just need more space. They want to offer more variety of classes and open their doors to even more youth. Please let them do this. I'm assuming that you've all seen the movie Field of Dreams. And we know the saying, "If you build it, they will come." If we build this new On Stage Dance Center, youth from all over will find their new home, and students will call On Stage their second home. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Is that our last call?
Yes, that was all.
Okay, before I go on, I would like to acknowledge that we did have some additional letters that came in that were not part of our record. Make sure that we include them, as well as all of the other letters that we have. Does any of the council members have, or sorry, the commissioners have any questions of the applicant? You're muted. Vice Chair DeBolt, you're muted. There you go.
There we go. Yeah, I have a question of the applicant regarding days of operation. Are they limited to, is it Monday through Friday, or are they open also on Saturday and Sunday?
The applicant, you can answer that, but you're muted there.
They're open Monday through Friday and Saturday mornings. So it'll be Monday through Friday from 3:00 to 8:30, and then Saturday mornings from like 9:00 to 2:00. And that's really stretching it. And we're closed on Sundays. And yeah.
Okay. With that in mind, then Condition 10, I think we need to revise because it says hours are limited to those hours, 8:00 to 8:30, Monday through Friday. I think we need to add in Saturday.
Can you repeat the hours? Can the applicant please repeat the hours for Saturday?
Monday through Friday from 3:00 to 8:30, Saturday from 9:00 to 2:00. On Friday nights, we're only there till 6:00. I'm sorry. It's Friday night, and not a lot of parents want to enroll their kids on a Friday.
Well, that's fine. We want the maximum. We already have 8:00 to 8:30, Monday through Friday. But there's no provision for Saturday. That's, I think we need to put that in there so that you have. Otherwise, you're limited to Monday through Friday, so.
Any other Commissioner questions of the applicant? Okay, the only concern I had, I do have to say that I did drive over. I went through the parking lot. There was several tow trucks that you have said that will be put in the back. It was very smelly of the grease, I presume, coming from those trucks, and hopefully coming from those trucks. So that would be on your end to make sure that your area is kept nice. I would want that for you. I would think that you would want to make sure that the landlord maintains the area in a fit thing for children to come into, and the lightiness about safety for the kids as well. I think you'll do fine with that. Those are my main concerns. It has to do with, there was only two open spots when I went through there. And I went through it in time, which shouldn't have been very busy. And I did notice that there were cars from other businesses in there. And that probably is related to somewhat, like you said, the COVID and that. Do I have anything else from any of the other commissioners regarding this? Do I have a motion with the change on item number seven?
I have a question.
Okay.
What are the hours of operations in this center right now? I don't quite get the 8:00 to 8:30 thing. I mean, Mr. Sees is operating, aren't they operating from a greater hours in 8:00 to 8:30?
Yes, the 24 hours.
Why are this, why is this applicant restricted, restricted on these hours? I don't get it. Why can't they operate 24 hours a day?
It was a suggestion of the PD of the Police Department.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think they're.
I can assist in answering that. So one of the things that we did was we looked at the call numbers that Mr. Sees has done in the last year, service calls for the PD Department. And so we noticed that the bulk of that was after the hour, around the, after the hours of 8:30.
Okay. My personal feeling is, is that they shouldn't be restricted to any hours. That's my personal feeling, if they're going to be in there. They should be restricted more than Mr. Sees is. With that comment, I'd also say that, or with that, I'd like to make a comment that this is a planlight industrial zone. So I want to make sure that everybody realizes that that's the primary use for this, for this area. And just so you know that, you know, when there are planlight industrial uses, you're going to maybe have to work with that or to deal with that, you know what I mean? So that, I just, we've, before here, during the Planning Commission, we've had situations where, you know, we worry about other uses not planlight industrial that start to take over certain areas and kick out the planlight industrial area. You know what I mean? So that uses such as this will say, "Hey, we don't want that Mr. Sees towing there. You know, we want to get rid of them," and, you know, the other things that impact you. So this, I just wanted to get that clear, that this is a planlight industrial area that the use, this area that you're going into. And with that, I still don't see why, I still would, I'm fine with not limiting, not limiting the hours if the applicant would like that. And that's, you know, my, whatever the Planning Commission, other, my other commissioners would like to do. But I don't see why we need to limit them on the hours that they want. I think we should be a little more liberal with the hours. And that's it.
Do any of the other commissioners have any comments on the hours? Would they like to delete item 10 or change the hours to? Anything in particular with Commissioner Lowe, do you have any recommendations for the hours?
I think we should go from 7:00 to 9:00, I think, would be, I'd be fine with that, 7:00 to 9:00. I think if they went to, went till 9:00 before at the other location, I think they should have till 9:00 o'clock. I think 7:00, 7:00 to 4:00, seven days a week, I think. I'm assuming it'd be 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM, seven days a week, is what would be my recommendation.
Were the hours set by the applicant or by, by us, the initial hours in the?
They told us their hours, and they were till 9:00 Monday through Thursday. And then with the discussion of the Police Department, it was set for 8:30.
And, okay, so did the Police Department have any specific reasons for cutting it a half an hour?
Again, over the analysis of the printout of the calls of service, Mr. Sees, which is adjacent to the area, they were relying on statistics from those calls from the last year.
Vice Chair DeBolt, do you have a question?
Just a comment to follow on to both Commissioner Lowe and Andrea's comment regarding the time. I, I first, I don't see how a half an hour particularly makes the difference with respect to safety. I mean, I'm not going to, not to argue with police, but if it's, I have no objection to having them end at 9:00, 9:00 AM. I'm okay with the times and dates that they're giving, giving us right now. They're closed on Sunday. I, I think they should understand that the conditional use permit runs with the, runs with property. So if they were to sell the business or anything like that, somebody coming in is going to be restricted to the same hours, et cetera. And I'm okay with extending the time on Monday through Friday until 9:00 AM, excuse me, to 9:00 PM. I think that they, they're good enough businesspeople to realize that if, for some reason, 9:00 is unsafe for them and for their customers, for the kids, then if they wanted to close earlier to, to take care of that, then that would be up to them. I listened to the comments and, and to the applicant. There's enough, there will be enough parents around to, I'll say, ensure the safety of the kids and make sure that they're not putting their children in an unsafe environment. So I'm okay with making the time till 9:00. I would make the motion to go ahead and approve the resolution with the changes, adding the Saturday times that they wanted, and just extending the close time Monday through Friday to 9:00 PM.
I'll second.
Chair Gross, if I may ask a clarifying question on the motion, please. There had been some discussion of also scaling back the start time to 7:00 AM through 9:00 PM. Is that part of this motion, or is it 8:00 AM through 9:00 Monday through Friday?
8:00 to 9:00.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lowe, are you okay with the 8:00 to 9:00?
Yes.
Okay. Would like to ask the applicants, before we move on this motion, if they're accepting of this as well?
Yes, we are.
Yes, we are.
Thank you. Can I get a roll call vote then, please? I have a first and a second with the motion to change item 10 as well to 8:00 to 9:00 Monday through Friday, to maintain hours on Saturday, 9:00 to 2:00.
Chair Gross?
Aye.
Vice Chair DeBolt?
Aye.
Commissioner Andre?
Aye.
Commissioner Quilty, excused. Commissioner Lowe?
Aye.
Commissioner Riley?
Aye.
And Commissioner. You're muted.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, your motion passed. Welcome. We hope it works out well for you. And I appreciate you coming in and speaking to us and all of those who not only sent their letters in, but the individuals who spoke tonight.
Thank you so much. Thank you for everything.
Very appreciative. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Okay, before we move on to item 7B, I would like to acknowledge that we do have a council member, Ron Bates, who has joined us tonight as well. Welcome. Okay, can I get a staff report on 7B, please?
Yes.
7B is, again, I'll kick it over to Tom, but really quick, it's again, another consideration of a conditional use permit, a CUP. This time it's for an equipment rental company proposed in the Planlight Industrial over there off of Portal Drive. So again, Tom will kick it off and give more details about the report. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair Gross and members of the Planning Commission, Conditional Use Permit 2101 is the consideration of a permit for a large vehicle, construction, and heavy equipment rental use in the Planlight Industrial Zone, proposed for 10850 Portal Drive. Joe Shaccatano from the Crane Guys is with us, I think.
Yes.
Yes, okay, great. And he's the applicant. The applicant has submitted an application requesting that the city allow a crane rental business, is what they primarily rent, to move into a vacant freestanding unit in the industrial area where a bus repair business was formerly located. The proposed building is on the east side of a cul-de-sac on Portal Drive. The structure is approximately 50,000 square feet and would be used for the rental of large construction cranes. The business plans to use the property for offices, for parking the cranes, to include also some trailers and tractors and equipment, maintenance, I mean, maintenance, equipment, storage, and then washing and refueling. The washing and refueling will be indoors. They will have approximately 50 employees. The applicant currently has 24 cranes, 12 tractors, and 23 trailers that will be parked in the gated areas of the parcel. The office is open 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM, although they are a 24-hour, 24/7 business. Outside the structure, they will be storing pickups and small utility vehicles in addition to the cranes and other things there. They also have rigging equipment that goes with the cranes that will be stored outside as well. As I said, the wash bay is inside the shop. The applicant also plans to install a freestanding fueling station as well in the parking lot. It's not connected to the ground. It's, it's not, I mean, not dug into the ground or anything like that. Conditions are added to the resolution such as no idling of vehicles for a long period of time, no shipping containers stored outside, no salvage operations. Washing is permitted only on the interior of the building. Repair is conducted on the interior. Of course, there will be times when, when vehicles are stuck outside, and they'll need to fix them there. But primarily, repair needs to be taken place inside the building. They've also been conditioned for no exterior outdoor amplified sound and no announcements and that kind of thing, or music. The center has 144 parking spaces, and the area could be striped for more if needed. It's a huge, huge parcel. The parking supply was clearly intended for a business such as this. The last business had buses, and there were, it was, they were large. So staff has reviewed the proposal for consistency with the general plan and the municipal code, as well as impacts to parking and compatibility with surrounding businesses, and believes that the findings to approve the proposed CUP can be made. And that concludes that report.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Does, do I have any questions of staff from the commissioners? Okay. I'd like to open the public meeting. We'll have the applicant speak first. I'm trying to figure, there he is. Sorry, Zoom makes you move around.
Hey, everybody, how you doing? My name is Joe Shaccatano. Want to first thank everybody for the opportunity to be here. Also, Tom, for helping us out throughout this process. This is our first time having to get a CUP. This is a big move for us and a big opportunity for our business. We've been in business for 15 years now. We're family-owned and operated. I was actually one of the first employees. I've worked my way up now, Vice President and Parcel Owner.
We've been seeking a property for probably about two years, maybe a little longer just because we've been busting at the seams at our current location along Marada with our growth. With that said, it's hard to find something for our business. We've found this within your city and it's perfect for us. It's perfect for us to fulfill the needs we have now, but then also to the growth that we're trying to gain within the years to come. We're very young, we're very eager, and we want to continue growing. So having this opportunity is just huge for our business to take us to the next level. So with that said, I appreciate your consideration and the opportunity and look forward to being part of the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anybody in the public who wants to speak?
I didn't receive any requests to speak for the public comments.
Okay. Seeing that there's no public comment, I'm going to keep the meeting open and see if any of the commissioners have any questions of the applicant. No comments, no questions. I will say I did go over to see the site. It looks very nice, probably a very suitable place for you. So I was very impressed. It is actually very well landscaped and everything. I was actually surprised. So. Do I have?
Make a motion. I'll make a motion to approve C U P twenty one dash oh one.
Do I have a second?
A second.
That was Victor Selfakanic. Thank you. Can I have a roll call, please?
Chair Gross.
Hi.
Vice Chair DeBolt. Muted.
Hi.
Thank you. Commissioner Andre.
Hi.
Commissioner Quilty, excused. Commissioner Lowe.
Hi.
Commissioner Riley.
Hi.
And Commissioner Selfakanic.
Hi.
Thank you.
Motion passes. Congratulations and thank you for the excellent staff report, everybody.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
You're welcome. Okay, item seven C. Can we get a staff report?
Okay. Chair Gross and members of the Planning Commission, site development permit twenty one oh one is a consideration of a permit for the construction of a fifty two hundred square foot, two story medical building to replace two existing homes on Catella Avenue. The building plans call for two offices one in one building and it's located at fifty forty five sixty two Catella Avenue and one one zero zero two Saratoga Drive, which is where the two houses were are. Elizabeth Craig from ProCon Development is the applicant and I think she's online. Let's see, is she there? Okay, okay, great. Yeah. Oh, I see. Sorry about that. All right. The applicant has submitted an application proposing the construction of this building on Catella Avenue in the commercial professional office zone. Prior to the submission of this application, the applicant submitted another application to the city engineer to combine the two existing lots and that's done through a lot line adjustment. While residential homes currently exist on the property as on the properties as rentals, the general plan for these homes is to be either renovated or removed eventually and replaced with with uses that are appropriate to the commercial professional office zone. The current residential use is an example of legal nonconforming use. They they've continued as rentals and they they continue until that is abandoned. The residential buildings were built years prior to being designated as part of the C O's district, but it's been that way since the city began nineteen sixty or sixty one. The proposed plans show twenty six parking spaces. The applicant desires for this building to be a medical building, which requires one space per two hundred square feet of leased space. The proposed fifty two hundred square foot medical building would require twenty six spaces. Therefore, it does meet the requirements for a medical building. Vehicular access is proposed for Saratoga Drive, which would remove two existing driveway approaches from the homes. This would improve traffic flow on Catella and add more parking spaces to Catella if those were removed. The plans for the building need development and landscape standards of the zone. The modern architectural style of the structure, proposed structure is somewhat subdued. The building is roughly a rectangular with stucco walls, however, through paint colors, screed lines and the stucco to break up the large sections with divided light windows, crown molding at the top of each floor. It has a modern business park type of appearance. In order to approve a site plan development, site development permit, the planning commission must make the findings that are in code section seventeen dot forty four dot oh six oh. And the proposed project meets many of these findings. It is allowed in the zone and it complies with the codes with the codes for layout and design regulations. However, through general plan land use policy two point six, the city has established a policy to encourage the siding of medical offices such as the proposed project near the Los Alamos Medical Center, which is down at three seven five one Catella Avenue. Staff feels this project is not the the type of building that was desired for this particular location by the city's general plan and that locating a medical office building at the proposed site would conflict with that policy. Based on the foregoing, staff recommends denial of site development plan twenty one oh one. And that concludes my report. I would open it up for the the applicant to speak.
Let me first see if I have any questions for any of the commissioners of staff before we move on.
One question. Am I muted?
No.
Oh, good. Just a quick question, either for Tom or for the, I guess it would be the city attorney. That policy number two point six to encourage the siding of medical offices, is that mandatory or is that discretionary on our part?
I'll respond to that. And Tom, if you want to join in or add more, you can as well. That that's that is a policy statement, so it's a matter of preference or direction in terms of prioritizing land uses. But it but it's not a simple binary, you know, yes, this is allowed and, you know, this is prohibited type of thing. There is some discretion there with the planning commission.
Thank you.
Do I have any other commission questions of the staff? Okay, I'm going to open it up for public comment reminder that while we all have the applicant speak first, if there is anybody to speak in the audience, it's the state of five minutes. And if I'm not mistaken, I did see that we did receive a letter for some additional information and I like to make sure that we make that part of the record as well. I'm going to open it up. The applicant is muted at this moment, I think.
Can you hear me now?
I can hear you.
Thank you very much. My name is Guy Castello with ProCon Development. I'm actually the general contractor. I am sitting with the owner, Alex Keller here in my office, along with the real estate agent who is a local resident as well, along with the applicant, Elizabeth Craig, who actually works for me. The owner, Mr. Keller behind me, would like me to speak on his behalf, so I wanted to go over some important points. First of all, I'd like to thank the planning commission for allowing us to be a part of this meeting tonight. And hopefully we can come to a good resolution because this is a very good opportunity for both Mr. Keller, the owner of this property and the city of Los Alamos. Mr. Keller's been a proud citizen of Los Alamos for over forty years. He's done numerous businesses in the city. He is, he's been a resident here for forty years as well. He's supported the local Los Los Alamos Police Association for four decades. He's worked with numerous donations and and charitable contributions to the city through Casa Youth Shelter, N C L, numerous things throughout his whole time here, and he is a very proud citizen of this community. He is, he is, just for the planning commission to know, he is using local real estate people to help him with this. He is using a local contractor, which is us, ProCon. We've been in the city for, I've been a proud contractor here for twenty four years and I've been a resident here in Los Alamos for thirty five years. So it is all family oriented here and he is doing everything he can to help with the city, give back to the city and also still be a member here. I believe the city planning commission is behind one hundred percent getting rid of these houses. I believe that is their goal and it falls in line with the two point six is what we were talking about earlier. So that is a huge point here that I hope the planning commission understands that he is as well trying to get rid of these houses and put a business there that would work well for everybody involved. He has had businesses next to the starting gate for thirty three years. He is, he has made the Police Officer of the Year ring for thirty three years now. He's been a a community, a person in this community for a long time and I really think the planning commission should see that and help him as well as he's helped this community for several several years. Been in this community, involved for a long time, probably a lot more than some of the people on the commission, so keep that in mind, please, if you would. Some other things indirect with the building. I believe the the city planning commission had mentioned that they would like a higher revenue generating retail business there. And our thoughts are a retail business is going to create more traffic for the for the residents in this area. That's going to cause more traffic in and out of the the Catella area. And our driveway is going to be on Saratoga, which will minimize that for accidents and those type of things. Plus would give us some more parking on Catella. There is dentists and medical buildings right next door to this. You mentioned that it's the medical area is across from the hospital there. Keep in mind, we are less than a mile from there. So there is dentists here, there are medical buildings there. We have plenty of parking. So it's not going to be a parking issue for the the residents behind us. We have talked to the residents. They are behind this as well, from what we understand. Obviously, if they have some different ideas or thoughts, they would be speaking tonight. The this building that we're proposing is very, very beautiful. It's going to be a beautiful site for Catella. Not to mention this medical building is going to help with that community that is right across the street, the brand new elderly center with all those homes and condos or whatever is across the street. It's going to assist them as well. It's going to be very close. So we truly believe that medical is a is a perfect spot for this and it and it does fall in line with the the planning commission of the zoning, the size of the building, the look of the building. We're willing to work with the planning commission to add some shade coverings over the window or whatever the planning commission feels would would assist. We'll work with Tom in doing that. We've we've also let me see, check my notes here. If, keep in mind, if if for some reason we can't work out a deal, those houses are going to stay there and it's not going to generate anything for the for the city of Los Alamos. Not to mention it's not a very good site on Catella. So I think it's very important that that weighs heavy with the planning commission to understand we are on board with the city of Los Alamos. We just need to figure out a a good thing thing here for the city and what's best for the city and also what's best for Mr. Keller. So with that, I'd like to thank the planning commission again, and if you guys have any questions, so we'd love to answer those.
Thank you. Do I have any questions from the commissioners of the applicant? No, no comments for the applicant. Okay. Do we have anybody that you can tell is here to speak?
Yes, we do. Brian Arkaki, if you can, let him mute yourself.
Please limit your comments to five minutes.
Hi, yes, thank you. Thank you, planning commission and commissioners for listening to your public comment. I also want to, I did submit a written comment in regards to the development of the property. I also want to thank, as I mentioned in the letter, I also want to thank Alex Keller. He's been really open and shared his plans regarding what he was going to do for the property. By the way, I live right next door to his property, so whatever he does will definitely impact me directly. In general, I, you know, I I support him in regards to what he's trying to put on the property regarding to the medical building versus retail because it will limit traffic and parking problems we have on Saratoga, especially my house since it's one one off of Catella. There was three concerns I did raise with him. I believe this is going to be a multi-story building and with multi-story buildings, there's privacy. Also, in regards to our adjoining properties, we have a fencing part part of the of fencing, we have no fencing in between us. And again, parking, he discussed to me about the he's going to have adequate parking on the lot. However, I do still worry about street parking because I think in twenty nineteen or twenty twenty, the city council lifted the permit parking around our neighborhood. So then, once they did that, again, right in front of my house and definitely the house across the street had, you know, we started getting cars being parked along our part, our street parking. In regards to the privacy, again, I think if you referred to the my written comment in regards to try to mitigate any kind of invasive visibility from the second floor looking down into our neighborhood. But yeah, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe we have someone else who wants to speak.
You're on mute, Maria?
Yes, good evening. My name is Ariela Keller. I'm the daughter and attorney representing the property owner, Alex Keller. I've also had the great privilege to grow up in Los Alamos my entire life and my family has been very active in the community, volunteering and otherwise. And we're very committed to to generating great revenue for the city. We love this city and my parents still reside there. So while I understand that Los Alamos Municipal allows the planning commission the discretion to approve or disapprove of such proposed uses for site development permits, I have a few questions with regard to the resolution of the planning commission and their their proposal for denial. I think specifically I'm curious to know why city regulations and policies are not compliant with respect to the proposed project. Additionally, I would like to know how the general plan and any applicable specific plans are not consistent. And, you know, how the planning commission finds the proposed project, you know, what's the, what do they constitute not near the Los Alamos Medical Center? Because as I understand it and as it's been previously mentioned, the proposed development is less than a mile away and it's on the same street. It's it's just down the street from the medical center. So I think if anything, it can still be a comp, it can still accomplish. So I think if anything, it can still be accom, it can still accomplish the land use policy 2.6, which is to leverage the medical center as a key anchor and encourage complementary So, you know, and as a final point, I would just like to note that medical facilities are, you know, more stable and a key, and a key driving point for potential clients from other neighboring cities into ours. It's something to consider, I think, for the planning commission, that someone from a neighboring city is more likely to drive to Los Alamos for a good doctor or a medical specialist versus a retail store. And that's significant to note because those clients may spend money dining or shopping in Los Alamos before and after their doctor's appointment, thereby generating large revenue for the city over a consistent period of time, since medical centers are also, you know, more stable than retail centers. And furthermore, as I, as I found from my research, medical offices only account for 1% of Los Alamos's existing land use, according to the March 2015 general plan. I couldn't find a more recent statistic on that, but I'm sure it's not much more in the last few years. Therefore, it seems to me that there's a need for medical facilities as they're minimal and necessary in Los Alamos.
Thank you. Do I have any other people online you know of that would like to speak?
That is all.
Thank you. Okay. I'm going to go ahead and keep it open and bring it back to the commissioners to discuss this application. And maybe our attorney could also address some of the questions that were just mentioned regarding our policy and our general plan?
Yeah, I guess what I would add in response to that offhand again, is, as we mentioned before, this, this policy 2.6 really is a statement of policy and a statement toward direction that has been enacted through our general plan. As Commissioner, Vice Chair DeBolt had asked, that's not necessarily a mandatory provision. There is some discretion with the planning commission to determine whether or not you feel a proposed development comports with that policy statement or, or whether you feel that, that the project is, is in contravention of that particular policy.
I have some comments.
Uh huh. Commissioner Saltbottany?
Yes, hi, I have some comments if you can hear me. First of all, it looks like the, the property's already been fenced off with construction style fencing, so I find it hard to believe it still has, is being occupied by tenants, but I don't know if that's relevant or not, it's just an observation. The fencing says ProCon on it, so there's also a sign on there from the Realtor soliciting tenants. So it seems like that we're already moving forward as an assumption that this is going to be approved. Having made those observations, I would also like to observe that this is zoned for commercial, professional use and currently occupied by legal non-conforming, which is something that we as a city probably should be trying to remove the legal non-conforming and put in place the, the, the proposed use, which this is commercial, professional. So it seems like this is the kind of building that you go there. I would like to ask if there was any other, obviously nobody else called in, but was there any other letters or was there a notice to the people that reside behind here? Because we had the same issue with the multi-story building with the orthodontics office, with the people behind her expressing concern about them being able to look down into their backyards. I think we actually acquired that building to remove an entire floor. So as far as putting a building there, I think this is a kind of building that was envisioned to go there. Again, getting rid of legal non-conforming is a good thing. It is not in the, the office, the, the medical campus, which is unfortunate, but you know, again, 2.6 is just a, a request or a proposal. So absent some issues with the contiguous neighbors to the, I guess it would be the south, I don't see a problem with this building. As far as seeking revenue generating use there, this is again, commercial, professional, so I don't know how we would seek to get any kind of retail there. It doesn't, doesn't, it doesn't go there. Those are my comments.
Thank you. Do I have any other comments from the commissioners or questions?
I do.
Vice Chair DeBolt?
Just to follow on to Commissioner Saltbottany's comment regarding retail, I, I echo that sentiment that it could be difficult to go there and then also even given the location, you know, where it's at, abutting a residential area. You know, we, we have that situation that we've had to deal with. Where, where retail, you know, retail uses are going in and we're, you know, worrying about the noise and, and like with the Griffin, Griffin bar, you know, you, you know, even with a gap between the homes along there, you know, we, we struggle with complaints and stuff like that for some of the uses that I agree with Commissioner Saltbottany that this type of a use is probably more compatible with the neighborhood that's behind it than would be another, you know, another more intense use with retail. I, I like the project. I know we have a, a resolution prepared, already prepared for denial, but, and if we elect to proceed with the project, we'll have to come back with a resolution of approval at another meeting. And that dovetails into the next concern, which Commissioner Saltbottany touched on and also the previous caller. When we approved the building next door, you know, if I recall, we were pretty well packed with neighbors at that time with concerns of privacy and, you know, parking impacts, et cetera, et cetera. And we, we enacted a few conditions that dealt with that. And if, if it's our decision to proceed with this, I would say, I would like to see what those conditions were that we imposed on the building next door with respect to privacy because I think the same concerns will be manifest with the neighbors. And I think given the, the situation we're in right now with COVID and people unable to attend meetings, I, I think it's probably more incumbent on us to really look out for the neighbors there, even though we've had one comment. I know that if this were a regular meeting where we were on premises, I, I would imagine we would have quite a few more people there expressing the same concerns. So, so I think if, I think we would need, if we're, if we do decide to move forward with this, and it has to come back, I, I would definitely like to see what the conditions were so that we can have a thorough discussion at that point regarding those conditions for privacy. Also, we have a letter from Mr. Arakaki also regarding fencing. I would assume the property should be fenced all the way around. I mean, just, so that's my comment right now with, with respect to where we're at.
Thank you. Yes, Commissioner Saltbottany?
I agree with Commissioner DeBolt. Maybe we should look at some of the findings we had at the, at the adjacent building. And I know, I know this has been done, but for the record, has adequate notice been given to all the residents to the south of this building?
Yes, within 500 feet of the property.
Thank you.
Thank you. I do have one question that I would like to also address. I know one of the major problems that we had with the orthodontic building was lighting and the lights in the back interfering with the people that were right behind. So if we bring this back, we do need to address lighting and that so it doesn't impact them as well. That was one of them besides the privacy issue. And I think they did do some trees to help with that privacy issue as well. And I believe the applicant does want to make a comment. You're on mute. Okay.
I appreciate that. I wanted to address a couple of those comments by the commissioners and yourself in regards to the lighting. I did the lighting for the Los Alamos baseball field. My company did several years ago for a Los Alamos youth baseball and they do have lights that can deflect that lighting to the proper area, area. So I'm confident with planning commission and the city codes that we will make sure there is no light shining in backyards and things of that nature. We'll make sure we have adequate lighting and we can accomplish that with the proper resolution. With regards to the fencing issue, there is a block wall separating the houses on Green Street and, or excuse, separating the houses on Green Street and these houses on Catella. So there is a block wall there with a second story, with any windows to the back, you would be able to see into there, but with some, some lightweight lattice that the city would approve or some vinyl fencing that would be the proper color, the proper look approved by the city, we could raise that to eight, 10 or 12 feet and mitigate a lot of that. And I think the, the residents would, would like that, especially since they're not having to pay for it. But we would definitely want to help the neighbors and get their opinions on this and make sure we work with them to get the fencing high enough to prevent that, put some awnings up on those back windows to prevent view into there, whatever it takes, we're willing to work with the city and the residents. So I wanted to point those two things out.
Thank you. Do I have any other questions or comments from the commissioners?
For clarification? The proposal, the proposal has been to bring this back with a look at what we did at the other building. Could staff kind of put some of those practices into a report for us so we can see what we did at that other building? And then I guess we'd want to bring back two, two resolutions, one to deny and one to approve. Is that, is that the thought, Commissioner DeBolt? Or counsel?
Yeah, if I, if I may interject here, what has been presented to you tonight based on staff's recommendation is a resolution of denial. If the commission is leaning toward the road of further consideration of this item, what I would ask is that we continue the public hearing to the next regular meeting of the planning commission. And depending on the direction we receive from the planning commission as set forth in a motion, we could bring back an updated resolution recommending approval if the commission would like to consider approval of the project in consideration of additional conditions and information as has been discussed this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is that the agreement with the other commissioners?
I agree. I agree with Commissioner Saltbottany and Vice Chair DeBolt with their comments.
I do as well.
Okay.
Yeah, I do as well.
Then I'm going to make the request that we do bring back some information for us, for the staff to update us from the other building as well, the pros and cons of what we dealt with there. Do I have, do I need a motion then to bring it back?
I'll make a motion to bring this matter back with additional information and an additional resolution in the event we want to approve the project.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Do I have a roll call, please?
Chair Gross?
Hi.
Vice Chair DeBolt?
Aye.
Commissioner Angred?
Aye.
Commissioner Quilty? Excuse? Commissioner Lowe?
Aye.
Commissioner Riley?
Aye.
And Commissioner Saltbottany?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, item 17, we'll see you in a month.
Thank you very much, planning commission, we really appreciate it and we look forward to those resolutions to do whatever it takes to make this happen. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, 17, staff report, please.
Yes, Chair Gross and members of the, oh, did you have something to say first, Ron, before I go or? No, okay. Chair Gross and members of the planning commission and subdivision committee, zoning ordinance amendment 2101 is a consideration of staff identified zoning code provisions that were inadvertently removed or misplaced during the 2019 update of the, the zoning code. Title 17 of the Los Alamos municipal code is known as a zoning code and was updated, updated by approval of the city council in November of 2019. As with any zoning code, errors are found from time to time and changes are required. These include clerical errors in some sections that need to be better clarified that we've learned over time. Staff keeps an ongoing list of changes that would be valuable to make when the opportunity arises. Staff would like to present those recommended changes tonight for planning commission consideration of a recommendation to the city council. A summary of the recommended revisions is shown as a list in your staff report. We could either go through them one at a time or just, you know, answer people's questions if they have those. Staff recommends that commissioners open the public hearing and discuss any questions or needed changes concerning the draft ordinance. We're not married to everything in it. They are, are all changeable and, you know, just say, strike that one and we're fine with that. They're just ones that we notice that make it difficult to interpret sometimes. And if appropriate, it would be good to approve the resolution of recommendation to the city council for adoption of the draft ordinance. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Do I have any questions before we open the public meeting of the staff? Okay, I'm going to open the public hearing. Do we have anybody there that wants to speak?
I was not informed of anyone wanting to speak for the item tonight.
Okay. All right. Do I have any comments from the commissioners?
Do we want to go through these? I have, I have questions on a few of them.
Would you want to proceed by the first one or how would you like to proceed?
It's up to you. I'll start it.
I think you, go ahead and start it.
All right. On sec, on the, it would be page three of 14. Side yard setback in the R2, R3 zones, we're requiring a, that opened to a, an out, a 15 by 15 outdoor court. What's a court? What does that mean? What's a court?
A court is a, an open space, basically is what we're, we're considering in that. We can change the name of that, of course, to porch or something, I don't know.
Well, yeah, the, the question is, well, part of that too is, our normal setback is a, is a five foot setback, you know, in the, in a side yard, okay? So basically, does that mean that the doorway has to be 15 feet back?
Usually what people do is they, they turn the front door sideways onto a patio is kind of how they do it, rather than have the door face directly to the side parcel line and towards other people's houses. So they usually just turn them inward toward a patio is what.
Well, yeah, but then that, then they're not facing the, they're not facing the common property line, but.
Correct.
If somebody does decide to actually face the property line, then does that mean that that, the whole building, that side of the building has to be set back 15 feet? Or does it mean that just the entry, just the, the doorway has to be recessed 15 feet?
Yeah, it's, it's something that I don't have an opinion, well, I do have an opinion. And my opinion is that it, you know, there are doors that do face side, side property lines, like for instance on a garage, there's always an extra little door that you can go out to get to your trash can and stuff like that. And that doesn't have a patio outside of it. However, it makes it more pleasant probably for the, the. However, it makes it more pleasant probably for the owners of the, or the renters or owners of the the units to open up onto a little bit larger area.
Okay, I, I guess that, so it doesn't have to be set back fifteen feet if they wanted to have.
No, that's, that was what was in the code before. This was the code before.
But we've got it as a fifteen by fifteen court.
Yeah, and let me find out while Michael had something, I think, to say.
Yeah, I'm sorry to interrupt that. I was just going to say that, you know, the draft in front of you does have the strike-through line. So we can go ahead and try to understand what the existing code says. And then maybe that will help us understand the revisions that staff had requested here and how that that varies. I'm reading the side yard setback in the R two and R three zones as proposed to be amended, says that it would open onto a minimum fifteen by fifteen outdoor court. Whereas previously, we had where dwelling or dwelling have entry from an interior side yard, the entry must open onto an outdoor court. So it doesn't specify depth there. It's just that it has to go to an outdoor court. And that that outdoor court has to have a wall, the minimum length of which shall be fifteen feet, and that minimum wall length shall be located directly across from the entry to provide screening. So.
And what it said before.
And the last sentence, the last sentence we struck out says that the dwelling entry shall be set back fifteen feet from the side lot line. So. I mean, it was specifically clear there. It's not laid out. It's not specific above. I mean, I think we should just make it really clear. We either let them, you know, let them open to the side yard with no, you know, with five feet away. And or they got to set the whole, I mean, if it's anything other than that, maybe that's just the entry. Maybe that's just the, like a recessed entry fifteen back.
Yeah.
I, I, I think we need to really have that clear. I mean, that's, we're trying to clean it up. I don't want to, you know, either eliminate it or I can't see anybody wanting to set their building back ten feet, an additional ten feet.
Right.
You know what I mean? They give up too much. So you know, it's not going to happen.
Yeah.
So we either say there's no, there's no doors opening that, you know, facing the side yard that they have to open. You know, entry is parallel to the, to the, to the common wall, not, they can't look into it.
It was, it was not, it was not our idea to come up with this. It was just out of the old code. And so if we can change it, that would be great, too.
Okay, I'm, I'm just, I just.
Commissioner Fekanik, you have a comment?
When, when, when Mr. DeBolt's done.
I'm done. Go ahead.
Two, two, two questions and a comment. Question, let's see, okay. First of all, why did we make the change? Why was the change desired? Second of all, is the, is there a definition? Is there a definition of court in the definition section? And my, that's my two questions. And my comment is we obviously did this to make for clarification, and it appears it has not clarified anything. Kind of.
The other one, yeah, the other one's pretty specific.
Yeah. What it was, was we had two different codes in the past. One says, please forgive me for reading, but where a dwelling or dwellings have entry from an interior side yard, this is from the old code. The entry must open upon an outer court. The minimum length of the outer court wall, which parallels the side parcel line, shall be fifteen feet per dwelling unit and shall be set back fifteen feet from such side parcel line. So it was very confusing then. And then it added into that was also in those instances, there shall be fifteen feet between the structure walls adjacent to the entry for a minimum wall length of fifteen feet per entry, parallel to the structure wall. That, that's all so hard to understand. And that was what we were trying to clear up with the new code update was that. That and so it, it didn't get cleared. It didn't get cleared.
Well, can I, can I add a comment there that, you know, again, we're trying to clear it. But to me, it'd be a lot clearer if we accept the changes there and just add the last line and not strike that from that section where it says the dwelling entry shall be set back a minimum of fifteen feet. I think if we have the cleanup, plus also keep that last line in there, I think it will really clean it up a little bit more.
Uh, yeah. If that's, yeah, I mean, I I guess the question I would ask, is there any reason that we would object to an entryway being with, with no fifteen foot, just the building is set back five feet. You can, you can open your door and walk out in that five feet. I mean, is that, is that a problem for anybody? In the, is this in the R one? This is in the R two and three zones. So is that a? I don't know. I mean, is that a problem? That, that we're trying to, is there a reason for not wanting, you know, for requiring a greater setback, I guess?
And correct me if I'm wrong, Michael. If we wanted to change that, let's say we wanted to go from a minimum of fifteen to a minimum of, you know, five, this is the time to do it.
Yeah, we can certainly take input from the planning commission if there's desired changes. What we have before you are just the changes that staff had identified internally through use of the code that they thought required updates. So if through the collective wisdom of the commission, there's other ideas of how to clean up or clarify language, we can certainly work that into the recommendation that goes forward from this point.
There's, there's two questions here that we're looking at is one is clarifying this paragraph. And the second question is, do we think that fifteen feet is an adequate space? Should it be more? Should it be less? So that's, there's two separate questions there.
Yeah, well, and I think that, I don't want to paraphrase incorrectly, but I think Vice Chair DeBolt is also asking whether it's needed at all, whether we, if we have a problem with the side door opening up into the normal side yard setbacks on a residential lot.
Yeah. Yeah, we could look into this a little bit more because I think there are sides, you know, side yard setbacks. And I think the reason, again, I apologize, I'm new to this, but, you know, having a fifteen feet is because when someone wants to put a pool equipment or an air conditioning unit, right, there's some rules about, you know, where to put it. And if you have to have adequate space, so a lot of people like to put that equipment on the side of their house. So therefore, when they put it on the side of their house, you have to have that adequate space between the equipment and the wall. So I think that's why they came up back in the day with the fifteen feet. So then you could still put your equipment there, but then still have adequate space between that equipment and then the wall.
So would it be better for us, though, to just eliminate that, that particular code or? I'm kind of at a loss on that one. What's the commissioner's recommendations?
I think after reading it numerous times, it is much clearer now with the amended language. Is there a definition for court?
No.
Yeah, there is actually, Tom, and I can read that all to you if that's helpful.
Please.
So court is defined as a space open and unobstructed to the sky, bounded on three or more sides by walls of a structure or structures. An inner court is a court entirely enclosed within the exterior walls of a structure. Other courts are outer courts.
I didn't know that was there. Sorry.
It's no less clear in my mind as anything else we're looking at, what exactly.
Yeah. Well, I'll just comment. If we have, if court has at least three walls and you're going into a side yard fifteen feet, you're blocking, you know, you know, you're blocking your side yard. Right? I mean, you'd have to be twenty feet away to maintain the side yard.
Yeah.
Why, why do they even have to go into a court?
Well, that's it. I mean, I, I say we I don't think we need this at all. It's not practical to begin with. Nobody's going to do it like Tom says. The way they get around it is they open it, you know, onto like a patio, you know? In other words, you come out parallel to the, to the and of course, I think, I think, I like Ron's idea that the dwelling entry shall be set back a minimum of fifteen feet from, from each side lot line. I like Ron's thought on that. Because that does prevent somebody from opening a door right into the, right into a five-foot setback. You follow? That could be pretty tight.
I agree. I like the fifteen feet. I don't know why we have to have a court. I mean, a patio or slab or something like that, I think would be adequate. I don't want to box somebody in.
Right. But I don't think we could have, I don't think they could do it. So I mean, so fifteen feet, that, that just basically discourages anybody from, you know, I mean, they'll design around it.
Right.
But at the same time, we don't want to have, maybe have somebody opening right into a, into a setback. Five-foot setback. So or may, you know. Yeah, just eliminate the court and just say the dwelling entry, a dwelling entry that opens to a common property line shall be set back fifteen feet.
Right.
Eliminate all that stuff about a court.
Is everybody in agreement with that?
I like, I like the language removing the court, you know, I don't know if we want to put some kind of vestibule or patio or something, or just leave it open for their own discretion. But I like the fifteen-foot setback that Ron mentioned, and I don't think we need a court.
Right. I agree.
Okay.
Is that okay with staff?
Yes, that's, that sounds great to me.
Okay. Do we have any other comments on any of these codes?
Oh, yeah. What, I do. I hate to read this. I read this stuff. On the adult businesses.
Oh, yeah.
All right.
Can you give me a section? Art, can you give me a section? I'm trying to follow my phone.
Page, page five of fourteen, under recreation and entertainment, adult businesses. We've put them into the PL one zone. And we have them permitted by right. Why wouldn't we do that with the CUP? I mean, we just approved a dance studio in the PL one zone. If a guy has an empty over there, another empty space, an adult business can go in right next to it by right.
Yeah, I think the, I'm sorry, do you mind if I respond to that? I didn't mean to cut you off.
That's fine. Go ahead.
I, I think, and Tom, if you wanted I'll admit what I'm about to say here, please do by all means, but I think the idea here is that previously, the code had allowed these uses in the PLI zone. Somehow that was inadvertently omitted with the most recent update, which really lent us us to a potential argument that therefore these uses should be permitted in any zone within the city. So we certainly want to eliminate that. As to why that would be permitted by right as to a CUP, I believe the reasoning for that is that, as you know, a CUP runs with the land. Whereas here, it's, it's permitted, but it is subject to our adult business regulations that are elsewhere in the code. This is, there's a reference under the specific use regulations talking about seventeen twenty-eight. And I believe those requirements in, in operational approvals that would be required would be personal as to that particular operation. So in that sense, you're not, I mean, I guess permitted by rights, not that different from a CUP, but at least we have an approval mechanism that's specific to each individual business through those adult business regulations. Which is consistent with, I guess, what the code had had before in that instance.
And would that probably say not within so many feet of a school, stuff like that?
Yes, yes.
All right. Okay. All right. So they could, okay. All right.
Commissioner Sol Fekanik?
Just to follow up on that, I understand why we wouldn't want CUP, as council said, it would run with the land. Permit by right, is there a third alternative where they'd have to come to the counter, talk to the planning director? Like a ministerial type obligation? Right? Or is that not, is that not a possibility?
They do, they would have to come in and get clearance through, through Development Services to operate and would be subject to the city's adult business operation regulations. So, so they can't just open the door and say, okay, we want a certificate of occupancy. We're permitted by right. If it's a adult use or adult business, there are additional approvals and additional regulations that would come into play.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So any other comments on that particular one? I'm sorry, Vice Chair DeBolt, were you going to say something?
No, no, I'm fine.
All right. So we're okay with that one, the way it is?
Yes.
Okay. Next one?
Definition of a bedroom.
I'm out in this meeting.
That was the subject of a very, of a long discussion in a planning commission meeting, I think.
It was.
I I I just would say that is a long sentence. Okay? And I'm just wondering if it could be broken up a little bit. Here's, here's the changes that I would propose, and I'll, I'll just throw it out to the attorney. I'm not going to I don't know that we'll ever have that same situation again, but you never know. Okay, so it says, any separate room normally used. I would just say, any, any separate room that may be used. Because that's, that was the problem. Okay? And it's, it's any room that may be used for sleeping purposes. That contains at least seventy square feet in area and is not accessed directly from a garage, and I put a period there. And then the next sentence I would start with by saying, this includes rooms designated as a bedroom. Just continue that sentence right on through. And then have, and, and have a period after similar or other similar term, a room, media room or other similar term, period. And then I would add this specifically excludes yeah, specifically excluded our dining rooms, living rooms, kitchens, halls and bathrooms. Just make it real, you know, clear, one, two, three, you know, breaking it up that way. And with that, yeah, I had one more after that. That's it. With respect to the bedroom.
Vice Chair DeBolt, I, I think those are very good suggestions. The only thing I would ask you is I know we had said normally used. One choice of language I had seen in other examples is capable of being used.
Fine, that's fine. Yeah, that's fine, too. That's fine, too. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Just, yeah.
That would be my only suggestion. Other than that, your revisions are very easy to follow and make sense to me.
All right. Thank you. Okay. Yeah, that's it. Then my last one had to do with psychiatric versus psychologists, I guess. Psychologists, I guess it is.
Hey, George.
Okay, yeah, the the only, the question I have for staff on that, uh. Okay, I know a psychologist does counseling services. I guess a psychiatrist does too. And a psychiatrist is an M D, if I'm not mistaken. Okay, but. Even though he's got an M D in psychiatry. Does he have to be in a medical? You know, in a medical type office? I mean, it would almost seem like if somebody's doing psychiatric work. It could be in a. Office building, you know, in a, you know, in a regular office building. Why does he have to be in a medical office? I mean, just because he might have an M D after his name, he's not. He he's still doing the same thing a psych- uh, psychologist does, kinda. I mean, I I don't want to. You know, diminish his education and all that, but I'm just. Uh. Is that, is that a distinction that we need to make? Is there another reason for that, or is just because he's got an M D after his name?
Um, I, you know, with Commissioner Gross here, Chair Gross, I was wondering if she had an answer, uh, because of, uh.
Yeah, but she's in that field, yeah.
However, uh, for staff, the reason why is because, um, uh, psycholog- psychologists. Uh, have either group meetings or they have, uh, one patient at a time. And they're, they get there at a certain time, and that is really the time that they meet. And, uh, so there's really only one person on site at a time unless the other person shows up early. With a psychiatrist, they are a medical doctor, and oftentimes psychiatrists are only there. To, uh, to ask people how they're feeling, uh, get a survey them on how, uh, their medications are going. And either give them a medication or change their medication is what they do oftentimes. They do talk, uh, like psychologists, uh, sometimes, but they, uh, they don't have set time. Uh, times for, uh, like, like other doctors, you could. At three o'clock and four o'clock is when you finally get in there. So.
All right, now, I, that was a question. I I just, I'm I'm okay. I just, you know, it's fine.
One of the other things to keep in mind in psychiatry, some do keep medications onsite. Where psychologists do not prescribe. So medical can prescribe.
All right, okay, that's good. That that's fine. I'm good. That's it.
Question?
Okay.
Uh, above that, above section twenty five, I guess it'd be section twenty four. Why, um, I'm just curious, I'm not disputing it, uh, why did we strike out architectural, computer, software, design, engineering, graphic design? Why do we strike that?
Uh, maybe I should let, uh, Michael answer that, but, uh, what it is, is because it's in another section of code.
Okay, that's that's an adequate answer.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's right, Michael, right?
Yeah, I I can't, um, you know, I think Tom could probably attest to the rationale behind it, but as far as the mechanics are concerned. Um, those uses have been moved into the industrial support definition. And so it was, it was meant to to make way for this additional, uh, use that we were adding.
Right.
Right. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Do I have any other comments on these code changes? And do I have any recommendations as to whether or not to move this forward? If I need to take a. A motion for that?
Yes, please.
Can I get a motion?
Um, move it, move to move it forward.
Can I get a second?
Uh, I'll second.
Thank you. A roll call, please.
Chair Gross.
I.
Vice Chair DeBolt.
Aye.
Commissioner Andre.
Aye.
Commissioner Quilty, excused. Commissioner Lowe.
Aye.
Commissioner Riley.
Aye.
And Commissioner Self-Potanik.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good discussion. Okay, a staff report, we have none for discussion. Before I move forward, I would like to, uh. End tonight before we close, in honor of a former architect, Bill DeBorio, who passed away here recently. Um, I will leave that in a minute and ask for a, some comments from Tom, but I would like to close tonight's meeting. So items from the community development director before we move on to speaking about Bill DeBorio.
Yes, thank you. I I don't have much tonight. I just wanted to, um, let the commission know that, uh. Um, at our last city council meeting, uh, we have, um, staff has been given direction to, uh, go and try to do, um, at the next one, which is in April, a live city council meeting. Uh, what that means is it's just gonna be staff and, um, city council members. And we call it a hybrid where if, uh, we have presentations or, uh, the members of the public wants to come in, they're still gonna have to zoom in. But it's, uh, gonna possibly do again in April, uh, staff and, um. Um, city council members, and that's gonna go again in April and May. Um, and then, um, so that, the reason why I'm telling you that is, um, we're going towards and heading towards, um, reconvening with all our commissioners as well. So I'm not gonna sit here and tell you we're gonna do it in April, we're gonna do it in May. To cook, uh, do some, um, how you call, um, testing and pilots to make sure that. All our, especially with the planning commission or our L A T V and our streaming and everything is up to date. But I just want to let you know, and I wanted you to hear it, and you know, you're not gonna come back and say, hey, Ron, I noticed that the April council meeting, you, uh, those, the council members met live. Uh, which is gonna be true, but we're gonna go towards, um, in an upcoming meeting, the planning commission, the traffic commission, the parks and rec commission, um, reconvening. So I just want to give you heads up. Okay?
Thank you.
And I'm gonna leave it as Michael or I know Tom's gonna end it with a little bit, uh, but anything from, um, Michael? No?
No, thank you.
Okay, and I'll kick it over to Tom.
Okay, yeah, uh, Bill DeBorio passed away a a few weeks ago. And, uh, he, as, uh, Chair Gross said, he was a, an architect, and he is an architect that. Uh, with our rolled up plans in the, in the office here, his name appears all over the place. Uh, he, he was constantly, uh, doing work around the city. His office was in the city. Um, at, uh, three eight, three one Catalina Suite, uh, C. That's where, uh. That, uh, across from Def Touch is where he was. Um, he, he started, uh, uh, his business license in nineteen seventy three. So, uh, he's been around quite a while. Uh, he, uh, in nineteen seventy eight. He built an office building. Uh, I'm just gonna give some examples real quick. An office building at three eight, six two Cotella. Uh, it's, it's a, like a doctor's office. Uh, he built the RE/MAX building, uh, if you know that one. Uh, he had to come in a few years ago. He had, he has a lot of. His, his, uh, structures and people kept coming in and wanting to change that with, uh, cement block. And, uh, he, he would have to come in and and, uh, uh, give us permission to give them, uh, his records and stuff to see why. They want to do that and all that. Um, he, uh, also built the youth center. I mean, he was the architect for the youth center. He, uh, also was the architect and was very proud, he used, uh, of the. Building that used to be Los Auto, which is now, uh. Los Al cardio, cardiovascular, which is that round top building. And if you see a lot of round top buildings around town, those are Bill DeBordi. Round top, round walls, things like that. Uh, he had to do it, uh, with a lot of those. He built, uh, uh. The community center, he, uh, he designed in addition to Casa Youth Shelter. Uh, so many things around town, and he, and he was a really nice guy, and I just wanted to to let you know about him.
Thank you. Do I have any commissioner reports? Okay, uh, just as an F Y I, our recreation department does have its Easter event in September, or excuse me, April third, from nine thirty to twelve thirty on Pine Street. Um, it's always fun to see the kids come out. We've had to adapt this year, so it's nice that we can all get involved. And again, I do want to just echo that we're closing tonight's meeting in the name of Bill DeBorio. A great man, did a lot for our city and will be greatly missed. Thank you. Have a good night.
Night.
Good night.
Night. Thanks.